All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order, March 4th, 2024. At this time, if everyone could please stand, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Christopher to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Tonight, we do have a presentation. Tonight kicks off our budget season, and the town manager and superintendent will be presenting the fiscal year 2025 Plainville budget. I think at this point, I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to head to the podium. Good evening, everyone. I want to start by saying thank you to my staff and administrators for the work they've done in bringing everything together, especially Rob, Andy, and Lisa. A lot of meetings that transpired to try and pull all of this together, and you all should have a copy of the book in front of you. So I want to take the time to thank them. You know, every year, it's a process, right? And so going through that process takes time, and we often have to go back and have multiple meetings because we need clarification or we're waiting for some numbers. This particular year was very challenging, my second year in presenting, and it was much more challenging than the first year, only because I think what I'm trying to do is to do some structural changes as well, to try to at least recommend some structural changes and recognizing that we can't get there overnight, that it's going to take at least two years, if not longer. But those will come out when they do the presentation, we talk about that. And I think we've mentioned them before in terms of debt service and capital, and those are really the two main function, main areas that I focused on. But you see from the first slide, we're still dealing with inflation and the number two issue, hiring employees and retention. So, you know, we could probably add a third to this in terms of succession planning. Nothing, you know, sometimes I like to think that it's not going to happen and that our great employees are going to stick around for forever. It just doesn't happen. So things come about, and careers come to an end, and people move on. So we are not immune to that, and we've got to deal with that. And I think we are, and we're going to put more attention and effort into that so we're not caught off guard. So I'll mention some of that in future slides. But moving along, give you a sort of the top-down, you know, scenario. Total proposed budget, $72,238,675. That's a whopping 4.1 million or 6.12% increase. And it's a number that knocked me out of my chair, quite honestly. And, you know, it's a tall order, that's for sure. And get to the next slide here. Looking at comparison year over year, it's only a .78 mil increase last year. This year, we are staring directly in the face of a 1.52 mil increase or 4.83 at this point in time, as presented, which means we had some issues with the state of Connecticut motor vehicle cap at 3246. So, you know, we're looking at, that's where the cap is on motor vehicle. We'll have to have a blended rate of 3294, and so the real estate and personal property will be a 33.01. So when you add fiscal year's mil rate of 31.42 and the 1.52 as proposed, we get to 32.94. So that is the gap, that is the target we're trying to hit, or that's where we're starting with, I should say. And we did, I think, as much as we could to get that even to that point at 1.52 with all of the headwinds and issues we have. And again, just the things that we need to replace when, you know, it comes to capital, things that we need to do with debt service and so forth. So further breaking this down, our next slide talks about the expenditures and the broad categories of Board of Ed operating. And obviously, you'll hear from the superintendent on his presentation, but just 2.4 million or 5.59. Town government is just over a million, $1,085,350 for 5.17. Capital projects, 425, and that is because we had only done 75,000 this current fiscal year. Those are some of the changes I'm talking about. Debt service, 250,000, trying to make that in line with future projects and things we're trying to do. So currently, 6.12. This is a nice color graphic, breaking that down, that the Board of Ed represents almost 63% in blue, the town general government budget in red at just about 31%, debt service at 5.79%, and then capital, is that slipper at the top in purple, .69%. Total, $72,238,675. Next slide is that increase. And again, it is significant, double last year's and the previous decade there, if you're looking at back to 2013. Overall, this community has been very, very, I think, conservative and very fiscal responsible in terms of what they've done. But things catch up with you, and inflation will kill you, and some of the headwinds that we're dealing with. Next slide on the inflation rate, as you see, okay, I guess, to keep it in check when it's, you know, under two or around two. But as you see in 2023, 7%, 24, 6.4, estimating 25 at 6.27. Tough to deal with. We can't escape those, and we're just trying to do the best we can to keep pace with it. Here we have a summary of functions. General government, $214,307, 7.7% increase. Some of that is obviously with respect to personnel costs driving that, and I'll have another slide for that. But there are a couple of positions I'll point out in that group, that we're picking up the payroll manager for the finance department that we didn't have fully covered, and then proposing a position, which would be a new position in planning as planning tech as part of our succession planning and/or meeting the workflow, work log that is being generated in terms of our development that we're trying to keep pace with, if you will. Public safety, a 5.5% increase, public works, 3.3, health and human services, 2.39. Civic and cultural, an 8% increase, but more reflective of an adjustment there in the rec department for one of the administrators there who we found was significantly underpaid compared to other colleagues around the state. And again, it's part of our retention efforts to recognize where we have problems and try to address those problems. So that's the reflection there. Fringe benefits, obviously, big cost center for us as well, and that is part of the total employee package. As I said, personnel, general wage increases, new position, and making up for another position, we've got the retirement funds, police and municipal retirements, we've got the health insurance, maintenance contracts, all involved in the government increase, other contractual. Back to maintenance contracts, some of the increase there in IT security mainly for cameras for town hall and library, boosting our camera network and security. Other contractual includes labor attorney increases anticipating for next year's labor union contracts that are coming up. But we did, if you notice in red there, the savings in the gas, diesel, and heating, so that was a bright spot in terms of some of the utilities, a little bit of a savings there to offset the increases. And all in total, as I mentioned, it was $1,085,350 on the government general increases. So this is positive news, as I reported earlier, last meeting on the grand list. This is really what is helping us through closing the gap in terms of the increase. This year, 2023's grand list was significant in almost breaking 2% at 1.97. That generated $1 million, over $1 million in additional revenue. What I want to point out is the year of 2020 and 2019, because 21, as you see, was a reval year. Thank you. I had a little moment there. Reval year, so that kind of skews the numbers, and where we picked up a miracle the year before, and now, again, riding that wave with some healthy real estate this year, even though motor vehicles took us down. So I just want to point out, half a million, half a million in 19 and 20, we've now doubled that and grown to a million. So that helps us a great deal in terms of trying to close the gap. So next slide is the budget use of fund balance that we're looking at, not trying to go any further than that, and plugging in the same number we used last year. And obviously, subject to council's approval, but that's my recommendation, that at this point in time, we've got to match that. I know there's been talk about trying to discuss that point as well, and maybe potentially ratcheting that back in future budget seasons. But I just don't see how we can do it this time around, so I'm recommending the same level. Next, we have the estimated direct revenues. So the grand list, as I mentioned, over $1 million, license and then permits at 50,000, prior taxes 25,000, use of money 14,500, intergovernmental mainly driven by, that's the state funding for ECS, that's why it's a big number, and our transfers in and out. So when we look at the 1 point, I mean, sorry, $4.6 million increase, the revenue coming back at 1.6 helps a great deal, and that's what is closing the gap. And so if you took the two numbers, go, well, we've got a budget summary there, 4.1, the 1.6, get down to 2.5, and that's what a new mil is going to be, is 1.7. So one and a half mils closes the gap on that, in rough math, so to speak. So our debt service, projects that are already out there, $21,295, town government, $10 million, Board of Education, 11.2. And we'll fund that by keeping a debt service principal and interest payment of $4,180,350. Town government is 948,000 of that, Board of Education is 1.7 of that. That allow available 1,470,312. But on the estimated premium, should we go out for a new school project, we'll have a $400,000 premium, and we'll have estimate of the 10 interest only on that estimated 10 million. So we're looking good in the first year of being able to put back 1.6 into the debt management fund, which we're going to need and continue on this formula and this path to keep debt service where it's at. Next is capital improvements. Again, a lot of requests. I think 30, 35 different, well, a lot of requests. I think the numbers, I had 35 somewhere in my head. But we can't do, we couldn't possibly do what we, all the requests that come in. And I think this is going to have to be, oh, I'd like this to be, future conversation around capital. Again, more of talking about future planning. And what you'll see here is I'm really, I'm trying to balance what we're trying to do on our side and the Board of Ed's side. I feel like, I feel like to some extent, I feel bad that there's not a whole lot in here for the Board of Ed, quite frankly. And they have needs just like we do. And, you know, I'll go through the next slide. We're at 1.5 million. You've got a balance there of 250,000. The general fund is going to fund 500,000, again, hoping to do more. The unassigned fund balance is going to have to make up the difference at 772. So there is no longer the debt service mechanism to do what we've done previously, and that's those are the hard reality and facts, that if we're going to go structural changes, this is, can't really, can't do it in all, can't do it in one year. But maybe we can do it over a couple of years. So next page is just a sort of a breakdown there, what I talked about. The Board of Ed is getting 210,000 in Chromebooks, and then further down the list, staff laptops at 63, so, you know, a little over 300,000 in terms of trying to do capital budgets out of 1.5 million. And this is, this overall number is lower than the 1.9 I think we had last year previously. So I was trying to make an effort to, you know, to get through and really go with the necessities and try not to break the bank. But there are a lot of, you know, other requests. I mean, the police chief is making a strong argument for police cars and, you know, his fleet. And when we look at roadways and building and grounds, they're doing some miracles with their mechanics in terms of keeping our fleet on the road and functional. And that, you can only go so far. There are like, you know, plow trucks and, I mean, essential equipment that is reaching its life cycle, the end of its life cycle, and they continue to patch it, repair, and do the best they can because they understand the reality, because it gets preached to them that we can only do so much. So that's the, you know, the overall breakdown of where we are with capital and the strains that we have in trying to meet the needs of the departments and continue to provide the service, you know, great service that we do. So, you know, that's it in a nutshell. I appreciate the assistance of Board of Ed and helping with this process. And we're going to be moving to a public hearing this Thursday, March 7th, here at 7:00 PM in the town council chambers. So I will pause and break there, and I think maybe if you want, we can break it up or save questions to the end and have Brian come up and make his presentation.
Why don't we have the superintendent come up, and then we'll, if any question, we can throw them at either of you.
Well, good evening. That's a hard act to follow, so. I do, I do. So good evening, and I wanted to just kind of take you through and talk to you a little bit about tonight. I want to start with appreciating the town manager and the assistant town manager and his staff, and Mr. Buden and Sam, and my board members, Becky and Foster, for being a constant support. This is, a lot of what we're talking about is something they've been hearing for months. So I ask for their patience in that. So if we could slide four, oh, am I sliding? Sweet. Oh, nice. So these are some of our musicians at the high school. We are very proud of them, and we want to continue to support them. As you know, the budget process for us starts really at the end of last year, school year, and really kind of comes into this year, where principals and department heads meet and try to work down to what's really necessary in the fall. They bring those presentation, those required items to us in central office. We meet with them and work through them in December, and then the Board of Education reviews line by line the budget as we go through January, leading to an approval with the Board of Education in February. So this has been cooked a few times, so we believe it's ready to present. So what do we want to do tonight? We want to talk to you a little bit first about appreciating your support for the, I don't know what happened to the picture of Linden Street. There was a beautiful dolphin picture there when I sent this along, but apparently the printer had other ideas. So we want to thank you for your support for the MSP project. That's been a whirlwind project, and again, we've had tremendous support from both the town council, the Board of Education, and the town staff and Board of Ed staff as well. That was a major lift, a quick lift. And we want to build context. You're going to see some information that's similar to what the town manager presented, because context is really the story of this budget. We want to talk about the Esser Cliff, because we've talked about it for, I understand you've been talking about it for a couple of years. So we want to talk a little bit about the mitigating measures we've taken and kind of how we're trying to move forward. And then to describe the FY '25 budget, and really taking the approach of describing what's not in the giant document of numbers you have, but what to, what to know that you need to know that's not in those numbers, or that you can extrapolate from those numbers. So in preparing the budget, we said we'd really love to maintain our class sizes, which are high in some places, but they are, we believe they are supportive of the work we're trying to do. We're trying to navigate that Esser Cliff, which has been a challenge, and we're trying to continue the improvement work that we have in place and continue to improve on our improvements. So one of the first questions I always get with budget conversations is about enrollment. Are we going up? Are we going down? So fortunately, we happen to have multiple enrollment studies at our fingertips, and as you can see, for the next six or seven years, 10 years, we essentially stay pretty flat with minor increases across the board. So that kind of gives you the enrollment piece, with the green being our elementary schools all together, the blue being our middle school, and the high school being in the orange. So they start and pretty much stay stable with some increases in the next couple of So something we're very proud of is our return on investment. When we look at, the state takes all of the scores they collect, and they put them all in a giant box, and then they put all those boxes in a row and say, how are you scoring? How are you doing, meeting your needs? How are students hitting their growth targets? And we have the opportunity to take that data and say, how did we do with the score compared to other districts who are like us? Essentially, we, if we are currently in, we are currently in DIRG G. However, if we go up to the next two DIRGs up, or the next DIRG up, we actually are the top DIRG in DIRG F as well. We would also be number four out of the entire DIRG E districts as well. In DIRG D, we run right about in the middle, and you see the districts listed there who are in DIRG D, and the DIRGs are done by socioeconomics of the towns and of the students and the needs of their students. So it shows you that four, our students are performing, the work we're doing is working, and it can be compared to other districts, and we're very proud of that work. So in terms of costs, the other question I've run into in these types of meetings is where do you land, are we paying, are we paying a lot more per student than other districts? And this gives you kind of a quick snapshot of where we are. The red line is our, the red vertical line is where we fall, just under North Branford and just above Manchester. And you can see there's a wide variety there, but we are certainly in the bottom half, which I think, from a financial authority, I think is a good place to be from our cost per student perspective. So one of the things you can't see in the budget documents by reading the numbers is that what we're dealing with here, we have in the last six years, if you do not count kindergarten and you do not count pre-K, you count other grades. Our students turn over about 6%, almost exactly, 6% per year. So since the pandemic, we're at 30% different students, and that does not include the ones that came into kindergarten or pre-K. Those are first grade through 12th grade. That's a significant change. It talks, it's a different, one out of three students almost is different from when they start to five years later in that category, in those grade ranges. So you also see a major change in staffing as well. 36% of our staff have turned over in four years. We have 36% new staff in different areas. That's a lot. So one in three, again, a little over one in three of staff members you run into as you walk through our schools, is somebody new in four years. That changes the dynamic of what we're working through, and that's different from public education from my perspective in the state of Connecticut pre-2019. Some other changes, which are similar. And yes, I'm ready for the green grass, so, because winter's been long, even though not that cold. With few exceptions, a district has been able to hire in the past an inexperienced teacher pretty much every time somebody walks out the door. You know, and it's hard to see people go, but we, we could always count on that for some cost savings. We also had a situation where in the, for the most part, substitute teachers were pretty easy to get and easy to hold on to. It's a pretty nice position for parents. That has changed. Our pool of applicants is requiring us to hire experienced. We frequently will put out an advertisement and get only people with four, or five, six, 10 years of experience. That just has never been the case in education, maybe in a place like physics or sometimes in special education, but not pervasively. It's everywhere, and it's with all categories. And teachers are leaving the profession, not necessarily here, but they are finding other things to do in education generally. So that pool of candidates is changing our budget scenario in that we used to say, if somebody at step five left, yeah, we could probably replace for step three or even lower. Now, that, there's no guarantee there. That's not a risk we should take, because at this point, they're just not there. And we are going to job fairs, and Mr. Levandowski is very, very skilled at selling our district to job fairs and other communities to try to engage more people for that, but it is tricky. We are filling our subs at approximately 78%, so because they're not there. So one out of five times a teacher needs a sub, we do not have somebody in that classroom, so we pull from somewhere else. That's a statistic that does not sit well, and we're working to try to address it. It kind of gives you the status of where we are and how it's different from five years ago. Legislative changes. The legislators always have some interesting ideas for us, and the one this year, three or four years ago, you, you had to be 21. Once you turned 21, you became this, and you needed additional services, transition services. You became the, you moved on to the state's system, that was the cutoff. Then, a number of years ago, they changed that and they keep, they've adjusted it. Well, this past year, they adjusted it from Then, a number of years ago, they changed that and they keep, they've adjusted it. Well, this past year, they adjusted it from the day you, the, your 22nd birthday to the day you finish your 22nd birthday school year. So if on July 1st, you turn 22, and you are needing transition services, you are staying in the district until June 30 of the following year, and everyone who has a birthday in that year is the same. There's a cost to that. It's another, it's another handful of students who require significant needs. So, so... And then, there's just lots of legislative mandate updates, stack-ups that are continuing to happen, such as handing more and more professional development requirements for all areas. And it's not that anything's a bad idea, but it's, it does affect our ability, the costs. So just to give you an idea, to give you kind of the, the big picture in terms of Board of Education, Mr. Paulus put out the, kind of how it, how it is between Board of Ed and Townside, and this is how it is for us. So if you look at the gray and the, I don't know, some kind of horrible mustard color and the blue, that is salary and benefits, and it gives you an idea of kind of where we are and what we have opportunity to trim back on. 46% are just certified salaries, teachers and administrators. Staff salaries are that terrible mustard color at 18%, and then there's the 21% for benefits. So we are really, it's all about staffing for us in terms of budget. So how did we navigate the fiscal cliff? We wanted, they, they chose here to try to do one-time expenses. That was one strategy, and I think they, there was a lot of work done in that area. The other place they worked with the, when there were special ed needs that came up during the year that they had not predicted and weren't budgeted, they did use Esser to take care of those issues. And I don't know a district that didn't have those problems. So that leads us into dealing with the cliff that we're dealing with right now. So, to really kind of jump ahead, at the beginning of this year, we avoided hiring three certified positions that were planned for this year. Some of those actually were practically because there just was not people out there to hire, and some were strategic in, in terms of being able to find this fiscal cliff. We also worked through our, our budget this year and said, we're going to take another three certified positions off the ranks as we go into next year. We know we can do that through attrition, through retirements, that we will move some people around and keep as many as we can without anybody losing their jobs. So this budget starts off, I can't believe I'm saying this, with a 5.59% increase and six less certified positions. So we're going to talk to you a little more about what that means monetarily. So here's the Esser Cliff in a different form, although I like the iceberg one myself. So the, the blue column is the $1 million and change that represents the entire cliff. If you look over to the small green $184,000, that is our, the Esser positions I talked about that we started the year and did not hire. The third green box is the three positions that we cut from the budget using attrition, I'm using retirements, so that's another $295,000. So the 5.59 keeps in, the dark green, $585,000, that is essentially a combination of, a lot of, a lot of that is paraprofessionals, and there are some other positions that were in there since the pandemic started to, to address mostly special education needs. So what does it do in context? So you have the numbers, the 2425 is at the $45 million level, and to just build context, similar to the first, to the town manager, in terms of percentage, if you look at the blue line, that's our percentage increases over the last three years. If you look at the COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment, you can see that that's been significantly outrunning our increases. So just kind of, if you looked at those two together, we would probably still be under COLA from a percentage increase perspective. Another way to look at it is if we were in the opposite situation where we had a, a rolling account as we go along, this number here, does this thing have a pointer? Oh, cool. But it doesn't work on the board. So if you look under 630 budget balance, that, that total number, that 1.7, is over those four years, the money that was returned back to the town. And if we were running more like a household account where you, you know, kept the money and said, okay, well, we had more this year, but that car's going to break next year, that 1.7 potentially could be sitting there and make this 5.59 look a lot different. One way to look at it, I understand that doesn't fix your prob, the problem, right, but it's one way to look at it. There's an additional contribution to capital from the operating budget, and you see that in the next column at the 339. We also have been trying to make sure that we're in a good place in terms of our turf, and there's been some contributions to that over the years. And when we had the opportunity to use Esser to cover capital expenditures, you can see that there's almost 1.8 million that we did use to cover capital, small capital projects that were able to be done in that timeframe. So, in the big picture, they're just a different way to look at our budget situation and the increase we're talking about. So where are the increases? The primary, as you probably guessed from the pie chart before, the primary increase is the 1.5 million in salaries, and that takes into account no Esser and takes into account the, the decrease of the, the six positions. The next step, following suit to the pie chart, is the half a million dollars in benefits, a tiny amount in professional services, and then you go over and transportation and $200,000 in transportation and tuition, because our tuition has been coming up over the years. Tuition's hard to bound, predict, because not only do you not know in October what you're going to be dealing with in June of the following year, you certainly don't know, it's very hard to predict, especially in these times, what's going to happen in the following year. So that had been rising over the years, and we did need to make an adjustment to make it closer to where we really are expending. And there's a grant that comes back from the state, and that's been fluctuating as well, but we believe those are good numbers. And then there are some supplies, some building supplies and, and areas that we'd like to look at this year, and a minor amount of equipment. That's kind of how it balances out. So when you look at the 5.59 and you break that down, take the percentage and say, let's add that, how do, how do we get to that percentage? 3.54 of the 5.59 is salaries, of course, and 1.29 is benefits, and you can kind of see how that works out all the way down. Obviously, it's not 0.0, but it's so, it's under 1, so Excel won't let you do much with it. So you can see it's pretty, it, it follows the pie chart pretty significantly. And since the dolphin got taken out of, or, what's his name?
Lindy.
Lindy. Since Lindy got taken out of the other slide, at least he make, had an appearance here, so maybe that was meant to be. I don't know. Just to kind of, and I know sometimes people want to, to look at how things are, are compared to the, the world around us. So these are districts around us, extensive list of the numbers we have, and you can see this year is a tough year. There's many districts on there that are in the same boat as we are, that we have tried to keep a very low number. You have this presentation in hand, right?
No.
Oh!
Sorry, I thought I saw you flipping through.
Oh, my apologies.
But that was going to be one of my questions, is can we get an electronic version of this? Sure.
Sorry, I thought, I saw you flipping through and... Oh, absolutely. That's the rule. When I saw you squinting, I thought, ah, maybe they don't have it. You did good for not squinting until now, so. All right, my apologies for that.
I saw it fine, by the way. Also very close, yeah.
So if you want to look at that, the, the small numbers on that real quick, so. Otherwise, we're happy to ask, answer questions.
All right, well, thank you very much. I don't know, does anyone have any specific questions for either? A couple things, and it's not necessarily questions, but statements. I was going to ask for an electronic copy. I'm sure we can get that. One of the things I, I wanted to recommend, when we talk about capital, whatever night the work session includes capital is, I actually wrote down talking about the capital plan. So, I, I agree that it would be nice to expand on just talking about this year, but looking ahead five to 10 years, I think. I don't know if that's where you were thinking, but I would recommend that we were able to look at that as well. And, and you know, I don't need to answer tonight, but on Town Manager, your slide where you showed the mill rate increase or decrease as a percentage, I know it's a little misleading because reval year, there was a pretty big shift to residential properties, and while we did reduce the mill rate, I think 80 to 90% of residents in town saw an increase in their taxes because of that shift. Can you put that slide in terms of a dollar increase or decrease from year to year? And you may turn around and look at Rob for that, but...
If you're looking for what, what that...
Because I know it, you know, it's a little misleading in the sense that, you know, we didn't reduce everyone's taxes 3.69 or whatever that number was, you know, two years ago. You know, I know, I know taxes generally went up, you know, as, for a dollar, when you talk about dollars as opposed to just the mill rate. And think about, you don't have to even answer it tonight.
For a model, like, if we, if we were to go back and, and pre and post, I think you could probably do that model?
I mean, we need to know the assessment, average assessment value in town for each of those years.
Looking by assessment value, dollar change, even with the mill rate decrease?
Well, I'm looking, yeah, what would the average person have paid in taxes? I think what they paid in taxes. Does that make sense?
I think we had that during those presentations.
Okay.
I can dig them back up and...
Okay. All right. All right, those are my only comments. Is there anybody else that has anything?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So, a 1.51 mil increase, what is, what's the dollar amount for the average taxpayer? Average household?
That again will be the same type of scenario that...
We'll get that.
Okay.
I mean, what's the average assessment in town?
What was the question? What was it? How much?
What is the dollar amount on a 1.51 mil increase?
1.51 mil?
Yep. What is the dollar amount for the average homeowner?
It's going to be about...
It's not very...
It's about $100. $100, it's about something like that. I could figure it out more closely if I took some time.
I think in the past, we've given, you know, an average homeowner's assessment.
So if the average...
Average condo, we've done kind of both.
That would...
And, you know, this year versus proposed next year at this point in time, and, you know, we, we certainly have those models.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
That would, yeah, that's, that would be perfect. Yeah.
Yeah, we have those, we're just pulling them together for the...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else with any questions or comments? All right, like the Town Manager mentioned, we do have the public hearing for the budget on Thursday night here in Council Chambers at 7:00 in the following week. I believe starting Monday, the 10th, we start work sessions for the next couple of weeks and... 10... It's 11, what did I say, 10th? Oh, boy. I'm going to write that one down. Yeah, I was going to say that. Be a quick meeting for a change, but probably not. But anyway, but thank you. But yeah, so we start the 11th. We have two weeks worth of work sessions. We don't always need all of them, but we certainly have them if we need them, so. Thank you again for the presentation and all the hard work. It's been a busy 2024 so far, so I don't see it slowing down anytime soon either, from my perspective, so thank you again. Now, you're all welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but I understand you may have more important things to do. Thank you, everyone. All right, so tonight we do have a public hearing scheduled. Before I open it up for comments, I will ask the Town Clerk if she can please read the call to the public hearing, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, March 4th, 2024, in the Council Chambers of the Municipal Center, 1 Central Square to hear public comments regarding the proposed ordinance entitled, Ordinance Providing for the Diffurement of Honor Heights Sanitary Sewer Assessment. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the Town Clerk dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 28th day of February, 2024.
All right, thank you. I don't know, Mr. Town Manager, if we want to just give like a quick, you know, I know we've been talking about this for a while, but for anyone that's, hasn't been here or paying attention.
Sure. Yeah, this was an opportunity to hear public comment on the proposed ordinance which deals with that component of residents within the Honor Heights that may be income-eligible to receive a deferment. It's plain and simple, and, you know, the criteria is outlined in state statutes, so this is our opportunity to try and help those that may qualify.
And this requires us to...
Create an ordinance to do so.
And part of that process is to have the public hearing before we do that. All right. I know there's not too many of us out in the audience, but if anyone wishes to speak to the public hearing, you may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Does anyone want to talk to the council regarding the public hearing on the ordinance providing for the deferment of Honor Heights Sanitary Sewer Assessment? All right, seeing that Gail didn't put her hand up, I'm going to close the public hearing. Or Jenny, I don't know if you wanted to say something. Rob, I was, I didn't think you'd, I think you're okay, right? But we'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing. We're going to move on to item three, the minutes of the previous meeting. We do have a couple of meetings to vote on tonight. Anyone?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Getteman.
To make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the February 13th, 2024, special virtual, special virtual meeting and February, February 20, 2024, regular meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Is there any comments, questions, or changes? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We can now move to item four, announcements and reports. You know, Councilwoman Maranti isn't here, but is there anyone with an announcement or a report this evening? I think real quick, referendum on the middle school renovate like new project is Tuesday, March 19th, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Firehouse. Just another reminder for those watching. Appointments and resignations, item five. I don't believe we have any pre-meeting that we need to take care of. Is there anybody that has any appointment or resignation to add to the agenda tonight? All right, we will move, item six, it's the first Monday meeting, so we'll move past the Board of Education liaison and move to item seven, report to the Town Attorney. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to briefly talk about the actual actions that could be taken during the quiet period.
Okay.
The last time that we had covered this, I went through the things that you could not do, and then I was subsequently asked to go over the things that you could do. So I just wanted to go over really in particular. You're allowed to be part of a PAC that advocates for or against approval. You can contribute to the PAC. You can have a lawn sign paid for by the PAC that advocates for or against. You can have a letter to the editor advocating for or against. You can post your own things on your own Facebook page, advocating for or against... on your own Facebook page advocating for or against. You can use your own personal phone text to advocate for or against. You can stand, you know, in front of the polling place to advocate for or against. You can do all those things. The one thing that's, the things that are prohibited is using any public funds to take a position for or against. So those are the things that you can do, and I already went over the things that you can't do, which is basically spending of public funds.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions on that? Thank you. I think that's very helpful.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So one question more. So use, the use of public funds, that would also include using staff from Town Hall. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Anything else under your report? You're, you're good to go?
I think that's fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we will move now to item eight, reporter to Town Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you and good evening. I have three items on the agenda under my report, Robertson Airport update, social media report, and a request for naming of municipal facilities. So those three, in addition to happenings, which Andy will be taking care of, I will begin with Robertson Airport. There's a lot going on there. We've made great progress with capital improvements that will enhance the airport's functions, most notably the POPPEA WOS segmented circle and wind cone project and fencing project. The POPPE system is designed to ensure accurate, reliable guidance for pilots during nighttime approach and landing. This system is new to the airport. These lights are installed at both ends of the runway and require FAA flight check prior to approved utilization. And the town is scheduled FAA flight check and hopes that that will happen in the next couple of months. The automated weather operating, observing system, the AWOS, provides pilots with continuous real-time information and reports on airport weather conditions. The system is new to the airport and is fully operational. The installation of a new illuminated wind cone and segmented circle enhances visibility of wind direction and intensity, assisting pilots in making informed decisions during takeoff and landing. This system is an upgrade from the former wind cone and the system is fully operational. The perimeter fencing project includes the replacement and repair of the entire security gates and fencing surrounding the airport. Phase one of the project will be completed this spring by Eagle Fencing, the awarded contractor. This phase includes fencing and gates on the west side or the terminal side. That's the side facing Carling Technologies. And it spans from the gate in the terminal through to hangar three, or from hangar three just past hangar, hangar six. The town is soliciting qualifications for on-call engineering, architectural and planning services for airport-related projects. The RFQs are due to the Town Manager's Office by this Thursday, March 7th, 2024. After that date, we'll have a selection panel. We'll review and evaluate the responses, and the Town Council should expect to award this project at one of their April meetings. So things are moving along at the airport and happy to report that these systems are up and operating, and hopefully the POPPE will be done once we have the flight check done. So that'll be another addition to help and assist in the nighttime approvals. Next item is social media report, and for that, I actually have a presentation for you and a couple of slides. It's again, it's not a long one, so I'll be, I won't keep you too long. I just think it's an interesting topic and. We've got a pretty good team working on this. As you know, we've got Discover Plainville. Discover Plainville Committee that we're working with as well. So it's kind of intertwined in terms of how we're trying to go about branding and marketing, if you will, the town. And so we're trying to leverage the free social media aspect and trying to put the, the, put Plainville in, first and foremost, in people's minds. So, you know, I've got a overview and objectives, and I'm going to have to, my eyesight is not that great, so I'm going to have to work off of my cheat sheet. But our overview, objectives. Overview objectives, meet the team, analytics, and future ideas. So the overview, so we're concentrated at this point on three platforms, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn. Twitter, or former Twitter, X, is a platform that we felt was not something we could manage in terms of the, the time necessary to do that. But think we'll get broad reach in these three platforms. Facebook, I think everybody's familiar with. I think you're familiar probably with all three, but Facebook and Instagram, a little bit different from LinkedIn, where we think LinkedIn, from a strategic economic development standpoint, can really provide us with some reach, we're hoping. And I think LinkedIn's going to come into play when we embark on, you know, future development. And I think I may have mentioned, if I haven't, but we are working locally with the Tomaso Brothers about a research triangle, if you will, bio-science triangle on the 100 acres that we have in, in town. And that's going to be really, really exciting to see that. And I think that's where LinkedIn will, will, will help us in terms of leveraging, working with them to, if we need to, target those companies looking to expand or find a, a lower cost center than you would find in Boston or New York. And so I think that's where we can collaborate. And a lot of this is, you know, we talk about in terms of collaboration, when I get further along in the presentation, in terms of some of the things we've done with local businesses. So objectives, I think I've kind of covered that a little bit in terms of trying to use the, leverage the free platforms, but we're also looking to increase engagement, to create informative and entertaining content, share information, inform people of alerts, notices, advisories, updates, town events, and more, and create a sense of community by engaging with the community to, you know, talk about the important things that are happening, some of the new and exciting things that are happening, and, and hopefully create a type of buzz around that. And, but I think it's also about building a, a culture here, that, that there are just a community that is rich with so many diversified things that are happening here. And so somebody had said in a meeting, I think we were with the state, when we invited a representative from the marketing department, I think it was Ellen that said this, right, Andy? That Plainville is really hidden in plain sight. You know, right in, in the center of the state, close to geographically centered, but hidden in plain sight, I thought was, was pretty interesting. And, and so now, I think we've got a story to tell, and, and so this is a way to do it. I think I can actually, I thought we had links. I don't know if this is a hot link or not. Yeah, I don't know if they're working. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay. Well, we, we wanted to play, I was hoping this would play for us, but this is, these are two of the examples that we use to collaborate. Well, one is in, in the restaurant, Italian restaurant, how to pronounce it, Pagliacci? Pagliacci, excuse me. I'll get it. I'm not Italian, so please forgive me. Pagliacci's, yes. I'll teach him. Andy is working on me, though. Yeah. We also did a, we did a holiday theme too, in terms of, you know, the Christmas season, holiday season, which I thought was great. I think that had a pretty good reach as well. And with Pagliacci's, we, we had an opportunity to collaborate with them, meaning that they shared with their followers on their Instagram account, which kind of, kind of boosted that, that reach as well. And it's, it's really just, it's twofold. It's, well, a lot of things happening, more than twofold. We're, we're highlighting and accomplishing our mission in terms of talking about the great things that, that are here, but we get an actual sit-down and, and get some, some feedback from, from the ownership and the business owners. And, and when we can collaborate, that's, that's even better, to get even further reach. But, you know, they, they start to share and like and so forth. So it, it's a great opportunity to, to find out what's happening in town. And of course, this is the team and, and poor Andy was, was doing it all. And now they've taught me how to do it. So these are, this is a young team here. So I'm the old guy in the room, in, in the photo. So, yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's fun. It's kind of fun learning about what it takes to build content and, and a lot of strategy that goes into it in terms of our, our tack. But, yeah, we're, we're getting there. It's just going to take us some time to build up the following and to do the engagement. We're, we're hoping that this presentation, you know, reaches other people in the community that will email and send ideas and, and come forward and participate. We're going to have a survey coming out for Discover Plainville. We're hoping that people take advantage of that, take an interest in it, and pass it along and, and fill it out and participate. So we're, we're doing what we can. We meet on a weekly basis to try and get to, you know, some of the strategies and analytics to see what we have, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, and, and trying to figure out different approaches. So I'll take you through some of the analytics. Hard to see, but whoops, I go back. That's on Facebook. Again, we're, we're just a few mo, we're only 90 days in, as it was February 27th, I think we were, we were 90 days in. But reach on, on, on Facebook, you know, 32,000 in terms of, of reach, our, our membership, I mean, not a membership, but our, our, our folks there and Instagram, those accounts are, are growing in terms of folks that are, that are following us and, and reposting. It's, it's an interesting look at what's happening. And so we have some things that, you know, you know, take off that, that work better than, than others, and we're trying to, trying to learn from that. And again, it's, it's still new, so not a whole lot of data, but we are growing. We are doing well. This is new followers, 119 on Facebook, 250 on Instagram. Some of the demographics, or more, more numbers on terms of followers, we started, I think, 2304, and we started at 2185, so about 119, 406 on Instagram. And interesting to note, on the Instagram side, Amanda was pretty helpful with this, and, and she discovered that I think those numbers are skewed on Instagram because they're not reporting the younger audience under 18 that are, happen to be following us. So I thought that was an astute observation. That's too small to read. I'm sorry about that, but essentially, I'll read it. Our followers, top cities, Plainville 48%, Bristol 9%, the sources or, or communities by which are following, Suddington 4NAP%, New Britain 4%, Farmington 1.6%, Hartford 1%, and down. Instagram, Plainville 53%, Bristol 5.8%, Suddington 4%, New Britain 4%, Hartford 2. Our LinkedIn followers have gone from 42 to 107, and that's hard to see as well. I apologize. But on LinkedIn, what we're doing is, we have a chart that, analytics that allow us to compare ourselves to other towns. So we're, we picked out nine other towns and we're, you know, just watching the growth there. And as you can see, we're, we're top of the list in that nine month, not nine month, 90-day period, or actually goes, yeah, 90-day period, that we picked up 107 new followers there. And so the growth is pretty good, and, and we hope to continue to, you know, put out good content that is both informative and engaging, and trying to keep spreading the word on what a great community Plainville is and what we have to offer and what, what's here. So one of the other things, future ideas, in addition to, you know, content development and, and features that we'll do, we're exploring YouTube and possibly creating some short and long-form content on there because we do capture a lot of video. And so we can repurpose that and put it in, into reels and, and other short form. And we have an opportunity to, again, for me to try and sharpen my skills and do a little bit more in terms of informational, you know, creating some type of weekly series of a manager's minute and, you know, reflections where I can, you know, put out things that are happening, things that might be of interest, and some things that just might plain be boring, but, and, and it won't go viral, but it might be informative to someone else, you know, and just in this whole budget process, or even just the grand list. I think I find interesting, I think there's a small portion of people that would find, you know, the, picking apart the numbers in the grand list and seeing that we have some pretty solid growth, you know, could be worth, you know, a post. And, you know, so we're going to continue to think outside the box, so to speak, and think creatively, and try to, you know, showcase Plainville and all the great things that are happening. So that's pretty much it. Thank you. I appreciate your indulgence. I just wanted to give you a sense of where we are and where we're headed.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the presentation? I mean, it's encouraging to see, things are certainly going in the right direction if you're looking for outreach. So I'm kind of excited to see the next, you know, three to six months, what, what can be done.
Yeah, you know, and I, I think, I want to say two more comments, you know, that I, I think of what the state is doing and in terms of tourism, in terms of marketing, in terms of manufacturing. They've built a pretty good team that is, I would say relatively new, but exciting to work with. And I, I see it as a sort of a, you know, if Connecticut's successful, the 169 towns will be successful, right? So sort of a rising tide lifts all boats kind of thing. And we see also an opportunity for other towns. We don't necessarily have to compete, although we are, we, we can share and collaborate. And when we do this development with the Tomaso Brothers and, and the bio-science sector, it's going to impact New Britain and Farmington and not just us. So the three towns, in theory, will be going, you know, to the state looking, you know, for economic development zone expansion and things of that nature. So we're going to be, you know, collaborating. And so in that sense, I think there's things that we can pass along, information we learn about this process. And again, the, when I started, it was just, you know, how can I do this really on a very low budget? Right? And so repurposing the office position to include the skill sets for social media. And that's how we were able to, you know, build the team on a very, you know, low-cost method and not, not, you know, obviously, there's some equipment, little pieces of equipment that we have to buy here and there, but very, very low budget. So I think we, there's, there's opportunity for other towns to pick up and do the same. So.
Well, thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
We'll let you get back so you can finish your report.
So item number three. Request and naming. We've had a request and been approached by the Sisson family. They actually approached the Recreation Advisory Board last year about dedicating a space in Norton Park. And this was Don Sisson for, for his late wife, Mary. And she was, Mary Sisson and her family have been Plainville residents for 34 years prior to her passing in, in 2021. According to the Advisory Board, Mary always had a passion for aquatics and was a lifeguard, swim instructor, swim coach, and overall advocate for swimming community. She was even a swimming and diving official for competitions in Plainville. Mary truly had an impact on the aquatic community in Plainville. In the last few years, Don and Mary's sister, Claire Wright, Claire White, have created a memorial fund in part to honor Mary and her parents from where her deep love of water stems from. The Sisson family is still working hard to make sure that Mary's love of swimming is being passed on, and the Recreation Advisory Board is in full support of dedicating a pavilion near the Elizabeth A. Berner Pool in remembrance of Mary Sisson. So this. So this item is something that I think the council will likely want to take up potentially and/or consider at a future meeting, or maybe consider a development of a committee, but there are information and history in terms of guidelines that we talked about. So we're, I'm just merely bringing that request forward and the recommendation of the Recreation Advisory Committee, so that's where we stand.
Okay.
And with that, I'll certainly take any questions before I hand it off to Andy for happenings.
Any questions for the town manager under his report? All right, I guess it's time for happenings. Thank you.
Sounds good. The Town Clerk's Office would like to remind everyone that absentee ballots are available now for the March 19 referendum on the Middle School of Plainville Renovate Like New project. Residents in need of voting by absentee ballot can contact the Town Clerk's Office at 860-793-0221 at extension 7153, or you can go to the town website for additional information. From the Services Department, they are hosting a workshop called 10 Tips to Manage Stress by Dr. Wendy Hurwitz. Whatever your age or situation, the presentation will teach techniques to minimize stress and maximize vitality. The event is going to be held on March 18, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Plainville High School Learning Commons. From the Plainville Public Library, and for all information on library programs, including registration, you can call the Plainville Public Library at 860-793-1446, or visit www.plainvillct.com livery. The library staff and trustees have launched a survey to help inform the strategic plan and their goals for the next three years. It is important for the community members to share their thoughts on how they interact with the library, what they enjoy about the library, and what they hope for its future. That survey can be accessed online at the library's website, and hard copies are also available at the library, the Senior Center, the Municipal Center, and YMCA. It's a relatively brief survey, about five to seven minutes, and it's really important for anyone in the community to complete it. The Father of Nuclear Power Admiral Hyman Rickover, on Wednesday, March 6, at 6:00 PM, this is a naval nuclear propulsion controlled operations for three decades. He was the Director of the U.S. Naval Reactors Office, and on January 21, 1954, the first nuclear-powered submarine was launched in Groton, Connecticut. This program is presented by the Submarine Force Library and Museum Association in Groton, Connecticut, and that's going to be hosted at the library. Radon 101 is on Tuesday, March 12, at 6:00 PM. Attendees will learn about the risks of radon in the home and ways to test for the harmful, colorless, odorless gas. Each household will receive a free radon kit from the South Central Health District, serving Southington, Plainville, and Middlefield. Space is limited, so registration is required. Monthly Movie Matinee is Golda on Thursday, March 14, at 1:00 PM. No registration is needed. And the Why and How of Solar Eclipses is on Tuesday, March 19, at 6:00 PM. This is a presentation from the Astronomical Society of Greater Hartford, and they will discuss why and how solar eclipses occur. Connecticut will actually experience a partial solar eclipse on Monday, April 8, and each amateur astronomer who will be in attendance will receive a pair of eclipse glasses. From the Senior Center, and from all programs regarding the Senior Center, you can call them at 860-747-5728. All programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. Tulips and Windmills Trip Meeting on March 8, 9:30 AM. There will be a video and a discussion to plan ahead for a March 28 through February 7, 2025 trip. This is one of the premier trips that Viking River Cruises does each year. It's a nine-night cruise of the Netherlands and Belgium. Flyers are available at the Senior Center, and you can call to learn more or to discuss signing up. Caregiving Connections on Tuesday, March 12, at 10:00 AM. Connect with other caregivers at the Senior Center to support one another on journeys to recognize the challenges and frustrations of providing 24/7 caregiving. The Chinese New Year Buffet Luncheon is for senior members, senior center members only. It's on Tuesday, March 12, at 12:00 PM. The cost is $15 per person, and you can register and pay at the Senior Center. The year 2024 is the Year of the Dragon, and you can celebrate with a delightful Chinese buffet lunch at the Senior Center. Line Dancing Trial Class on Thursday, March 14, from 1:30 PM to 2:30 PM. Learn the basics of line dancing with an experienced instructor. Partners are not required, and you could sign up for this free trial class at the Senior Center, and if they have enough interest, they will add this as a regular weekly class. St. Patrick and Buzzards Dual Event, this is also only open to senior center members, on Friday, March 15, at 10:30 AM. You can celebrate the buzzards returning to Hinckley, Ohio, and St. Patrick's Day all in one morning, compete in the Buzzards Olympics, the most snazily dressed leprechaun contest, and you can enjoy delectable green treats and an Irish buzzard singing along. Not quite sure what all of that means, but it sounds exciting. I might be a leprechaun, I might not be, but I will, I saw Deb perk up. I will, if it'll win, if it'll win in favor.
You're just a little tall for the height.
I have never been called too tall, so I appreciate that, Councilman Hurley. Easter and Spring Card Class, again, this is only open to senior center members on Monday, March 18, at 1:30 PM. The cost is $4, and it includes all the supplies necessary. You can join them as they get ready for the springtime and Easter by creating four of your own personalized cards. Help for Veterans on Tuesday, March 19, at 10:00 AM. This is by appointment only. You can call Jason Coppola, the Veteran Service Officer, at 203-805-6340 to find out about your status, or if you need help completing any paperwork, or if you need help preparing for a face-to-face meeting, you can do so at the Senior Center. And finally, Grandparents Raising Grandchildren on Tuesday, March 19, at 10:30 AM. This is an opportunity to share resources, ideas, struggles, joys, and more with others who are raising their grandchildren or other close relatives. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Andy.
All right. Thank you both. Before we move on, any last-minute comments or questions? Yes, go ahead.
The event on March 18, the stress, managing your stress?
Yes.
Were you asked already to make a post about that?
I'm not sure if I was asked to make a post, but Sneha has sent it over, and we will be making a post.
Thank you.
And I'll consider that another request, so we certainly can get that done.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other question I have, and it has nothing to do with, and I'm not even sure this is where I'm supposed, should ask it, is I know early voting is coming up for the primary, are we good?
For the?
Yeah, for the presidential primary. Are we, are we good? Are we ready? Has the state been helpful?
I'll be polite.
This is recorded.
Yeah.
The state has been working with the registrars and the town clerks.
Okay.
They've drafted an early voting handbook, which they revise on a daily basis. So it's been a work in progress. The town clerks and the registrars are working together diligently, I'll tell you that. The dates for early voting will be March 26, 27, and 28. The 29th is Good Friday, so we will not have early voting that day. And then Saturday, the 30th.
Okay.
From 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Here, Firehouse?
Here.
Here.
At Town Hall. I believe it will be in the registrar's office.
Okay.
You'll apply, and then they'll set up sectional voting faux booths outside.
Got you.
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll be interesting, it'll go well, we'll work as a team.
Yeah.
And I think it'll be fine. It's only four days for the presidential preference primary.
Right.
It's only four days, so.
And then the increases for the regular primary?
Correct. And then I think for the August 13 voting date, it'll be 10 days.
Okay.
And then for the Super Tuesday, November 5, it will be 14 days. I don't have the designated dates on that, they'll tell us.
Right.
What the dates will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Did that help?
Yeah, yeah, I was just, I got a reminder, I got an email the other day about it, and I just, I kept meaning to ask.
And the absentee ballots for April 2 will then be available March 12. Just to give you guys a, a lot of election dates and a lot of wheels turning in my office and registrars.
The primary voters are, will only, no unaffiliated voters will be able to...
You must be a registered Democrat or a registered Republican to vote in any primary.
Okay. Just want to make sure that information got out.
That is correct. That is.
A lot of people try to vote that aren't qualified.
If you're an unaffiliated voter, you are still eligible to change parties, not if you are a Republican or a Democrat. The deadline has passed.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, if you change from a major party, your voting rights are suspended for 90 days.
That I know. I didn't know you could go from unaffiliated to...
Oh, unaffiliated, you can change at any time.
And it doesn't matter.
And it doesn't matter.
That's great, we're learning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, at this point in the meeting, we'll move to public comments. Gail or Ginny, if you wish to address the council on any topic, please step forward to the podium, give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Gail.
I haven't done any of that stuff. I used to do research, because, you know, that's all I get on the computer.
Gail, before you start, hit the button to turn on the microphone, right at the bottom of the little box.
Circle, up top? There you go.
All right, okay.
Just don't forget your name and address.
Gail Black, 4 C N C Avenue. Okay, so this is my first experience, I guess that's what Facebook kind of looks like, except that I did kind of hear it through a neighbor in Canaan, because we were outside and we heard this sound. And so my friend ended up going back in the house and posting the sound we heard, which was probably a dozen coyotes. And we thought they were after their prey, but this is how I learned that it was mating season, so through, through that. So it was interesting, but I liked your presentation there. I would like to say, like, I've been running into a lot of people lately, this is a sad thing. We need, we need to have more affordable housing. I don't think we should just have it for seniors. I'm to think about moving, I put my name down for the housing, but it depresses me to think I'm going to be living next to a whole bunch of old people. I don't, it really does. Every time there's, I go out shopping, I start talking to the young people. I like to hear what they have to say. And it's just, a lot of people lately have been looking for places to live. And some other lady was also looking, she's about my age, so, you know, other people are moving out of town, and then you get people that have moved out of college, they can't find a place. So they have to move, well, one guy, I was on the phone paying a bill, he had to leave New England, and he went to Ohio so he could find a place he could afford. Nobody in, in, what do you call it, New England, had affordable housing. And it doesn't mean that you have to keep it totally low, but, you know, I mean, they have tiny homes, they have tiny houses. And, okay, the last thing I'll say, which has nothing to do with that, but please, if you're going to be using those gummy bears or those, you know, with a pot in them, whatever, the PCBs or whatever, please make sure you keep away from your children and from your pets. My friend, who's a vet out in Minnesota, has been taking care of a lot of stone dogs, so that's the word.
Well, thank you for that. I did not have that on my bingo card as far as discussions that we were going to talk about tonight. But thank you, Gail. Ginny, I don't mean to like put pressure on you, but do you have anything you want to say?
No, thank you.
All right, that's fair. All right, yeah, you can't talk about him, yeah, we're not going to let that happen. But thank you. So we'll close public comments. No old business tonight, we'll move to item 11, new business. We do have a couple motions tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Getteman.
I'd like to make a motion for proposed ordinance entitled Ordinance Providing for the Deferrment of Honor Height Sanitary Sewer Assessment.
Second. All right, motion and a second. Any more comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Hurley.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions on tax refunds? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Any other discussions of interest tonight from anyone? All right, we'll move on, no executive session matters, so we are ready to, ready to adjourn. A motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we will see you guys Thursday night, 7 o'clock.